All right, it's January third, two thousand and twenty-three, seven thirty-seven P M. Going to call the town of Willington Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Members present or myself, John D N, Bob Shavitt, Andy Marco, Doug Roberts, Becca Sanoski, Joe Hall, William Minell, and Michael Jonahson. And we don't have any empty seats tonight, I think. All right. No applications for receipt, no public hearings tonight, brings us to item E, unfinished business. P Z dash twenty-two dash fourteen text amendment application pertaining to the prohibition of cannabis establishments. Section thirteen applicant Willington Planning and Zoning Commission. All right, where are we at with this?
It's been sitting for a while. We've had a number of iterations of kind of that led up to this last draft. You got a couple of extras if folks don't have it. Anybody need it or want it? Yes, now. Got one?
I'll share with someone.
So, I think, and we, I think, just didn't want to make any decisions last time you just.
Yeah, we're missing members.
But the, sort of, the overall premise removes everything but the retail component as an allowed use and adds category or requirements to retail establishments for not being located within a thousand feet of eighty-four and in a building of at least fifteen thousand square feet. Phelps Plaza is just above that, so this is as close as we were able to get to effectively cap. And then it just takes the cultivation and all those other uses off the table.
The retailer at Phelps Plaza would remain say, conforming.
Yeah, that building is more than a thousand feet away from the highway and is over fifteen thousand square feet.
Okay, so they stay conforming in this.
All right, and we did run a report. We looked at the, all the buildings in town based upon size to get a sense of how many are at the fifteen thousand plus. So, you know, we have a pretty good understanding. It's not like there's hundreds of buildings that are fifteen thousand square feet or greater.
So we're potentially could another one go.
We've taken out everything along the highway at those two exits.
What's, what's the advantage of that?
I don't know what the advantage is, but it's just sort of one of the things that was discussed previously was not wanting folks to just get off, come to Willington to have a cannabis retailer right on the highway and then leave. I don't know, yeah.
I mean, like I said last meeting, personally, I had reservations in the beginning. But we're not the morality police. And I just think that there's too much upside as far as revenue. If there were two or three of these places, you're talking sixty to eighty million of revenue, one point eight two point four million in tax revenue on a town that has a budget of thirteen million a year. And when these new projects come up, it could mean the difference of whether or not someone is allowed to age in place in this town or not.
Well, I think it remains to be seen how much these places generate in tax, or that it's been unknown. I was just listening on NPR like a few days ago about the state of the cannabis industry in California. It's in a recession. They're laying off two-thirds of their workers at the grow operations and everything because they still have a heavy amount of competition from the black market and and now the market's saturated, you know, with it.
It's definitely.
So we're counting our chickens for their hash. We think we're going to have a lot of revenue.
Well, well, I guess that remains to be seen, but we have a lot of control with special permit with these places. I mean, if they're not conforming and if there's a written complaint, we can basically shut them down if they don't bring themselves into complaints. And that special permit could be renewable on an annual basis, but to basically restrict it, you know that companies aren't going to invest in the attorney fees, try to have a regulation reverse.
Well, we can always revisit this at a later date.
I, I think what we ought to do is see how they, sure we can. We're the ones that put it in. Of course, we can.
Well, yeah, if we put the regulation, if we basically restrict it.
We can unrestrict it if we like what we see with the One and Phelps Plaza. It's a good neighbor, no issues, absolutely.
Well, I guess what's the point of having it? So then you do.
Because you can stop work from coming in while you're waiting to see how that one does.
Not turn into a saturation effect, if you're talking.
And people have argued that, you know, you didn't want any for.
Yeah, that's the thing. I mean, I asked other town commissions to make their opinion known, and there were no commissions made over the eight years or paid employees that had any dissent against it. And there was no businesses that basically came forward and said they really disagreed with it. And you've got that other person in the public, basically, they're saying that, you know, the Stafford select and was saying, I hope Willington doesn't, because it's more business for their town. I don't know.
Right, well, we heard from both sides and.
There were a few.
And I think this was the middle ground that we chose to pursue.
Yeah.
I think the one thing that we didn't want to do is make the crew, because they felt nonconforming, and they just made that nonconforming. Once they set something like their hours, they couldn't change those. But as long as they're conforming, then they, and, and, you know, you don't want to saddle a business with unreasonable restrictions to.
I, I agree with that. And, you know, I want to see how that business does. I want to see how, you know. But it's not even open yet. When's it open, March? Do you have any idea?
They are in the process of finalizing the lease as of now. January tenth is, you can't do any sales until after that, so.
Yeah, that mistake, that's all of the news when that happens, but.
But they're still moving forward as of, you know, this yesterday. So, so they're still proceeding.
Well, any business should be mindful of the risk of saturation. But it seems like it's a lot of potential revenue.
Well, we had a one point five million square feet of potential revenue.
And then they decided, they voted, it was unanimous.
But not everything is about like tax revenue. It's about like quality of life in a town too and things like that, you know, and I certainly, you know, personally, I accept the one coming in. They did it by the rules. They're coming in, not making them nonconforming is the right thing to do. You want to give them a chance to succeeding. And none of it, you know, this, if we were to do this, it's not rigid stone. We could, you know, we say, we, well, we like what we see, you know, they're a good neighbor. No issues, no traffic problems, that, you know, no lawyering around the place, none of that happened, okay. Maybe it's something we ought to pursue further then. And, and you'll have some idea what kind of tax revenue you're seeing after a year. And I've seen all this stuff getting posted about like our mill rates and everything, and I think a lot of that's sheer speculation right now that the school and everything, you know.
Well, they haven't even figured out what the impact's going to be, but I mean, if you take in thirty million over a thirty-year bond, you can find that.
Yeah.
The souls and you're talking in the twenty percent.
And that's why it's going to referendum. People are going to have to think about like they want a school or they want.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's options, so.
I'm not happy with what we have in front of us.
I am too. I think it's well thought out, you know, what if we, and I think we're all reasonable enough to say, hey, you know, good, good business here, good neighbor, you know, let's, let's reconsider.
Well.
But this gives us some leverage in the next like year or so to say, hey, you know, let's see how the one that we have does, and we like it, I'd certainly revisit it.
Well, and this, this helps existing business in town. It helps Phil Phelps Plaza, I couldn't agree more about that. And, you know, there's a number of empty spaces in Phelps, so this is certainly going to help, help the owner there.
And they've struggled for years keeping that plaza full, so, you know, if this helps the plaza, great.
Right, I talked to the guy that's running the package store now. He's glad that somebody's moving in next door.
Well, package stores don't have it easy anymore either. You got all these discounters and everything, you know, that should make that business nice.
That's a problem. I guarantee that it'll be a success. This guy moves in, he's not competitive.
Well, at first you consider it's the novelty of it, right? There's the first, there's the initial novelty we have that you, it'll probably be quite busy. Let's hope it stays busy. Now, that'd be good. That'd be a good thing.
Yeah.
Be good, you know, good for the tax revenues, good for the plaza. It's like with anything new though, you get that initial, like everybody's interested because, you know, marijuana has been legal before in Connecticut, so everybody can, you know, that's interested in, in, you know, buying something or going there. Well, we have other commissioners online here. Let's, John or Andy or Joe, you want to participate?
Personally, I don't see a reason to ban them at this point. I'm kind of with Doug on, you know, if we get a couple more of these, it may help tax base. I, I get your point, Walter, that, you know, it'd be nice to just give us a break to assess how this first business does. I certainly understand the point, but by the same token, you know, I don't think that there's going to be a whole lot of problems around this place. You know, you take a look at some of the establishments in Sturbridge, there's not a whole lot of problems around those establishments in Sturbridge. They're right up the street. They have three of them. And they're, you know, they're making up quite well. Situation in California is vastly different from the situation here in the Northeast as far as competition from the black market, et cetera. California's always had a huge black market in marijuana, to the point where they have armed gangs in the hills, so, you know, you got to watch out when you go hiking and stuff like that. If this comes to a vote, I would, I would vote against it. I would leave the existing bylaw in place, but that's, that's just me.
Hey, thanks, Joe. Joe? She's saying, Andy, you have anything?
Mike, this is Andy. My thought would be, could we at least make sort of a formal resolution that we will take an active look at this, say, January of two thousand and twenty-four, that we'll actually have it on the agenda and, you know, make a, just a, you know, put a hard line that we will actually review it and see if anything needs to be changed. The second thought is, I'm curious as to what changed. I mean, the cannabis, I wasn't a very active participant during some of those meetings. But clearly, everyone put their time in and it went to, it went through several meetings and the original resolution was drafted. I mean, the original amendment to the, the regulations was drafted and approved, and then it kind of came under fire. What, what, what changed? I'm just curious as to what, what made the original text.
Because when the other one had to be put in without waiting any longer, because it would have went to the least restrictive, if, if we didn't have something in place, is that correct, Mike?
Right, we would have had to have regulated it as a similar use.
Okay, and the nearest similar use would be a liquor store.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I see.
Okay. So this was just, time went on and, you know, we had more time to think about it, and some people from the town spoke up and then gave us food for thought, and then we felt like some amendments were in order. Okay. Well, I guess if we, if we are, you know, if we say that we will, that we have the means to amend this, then I think we should put a hard point in our agenda to make sure we actually do look at it. In all fairness, just to ourselves, to the town, and to everybody else's points about proper land use. That's it, I'm done.
It's not a bad point, Andy. Any, any further?
If, if I could add one thing, I think we ought to revisit the definition in the zoning regs of a permit premises to include license for retail cannabis, because right now permit premises is defined only as liquor. I realize that can't be done with this text amendment, but perhaps, Mike, if you could add it. I'm sorry.
Talked about that at the last meeting. It's not in, it's not in what you have here.
All right, we have to change it in our zoning regs.
Remember, we talked about eliminating the liquor control, the liquor spaces, that word, so that it applies across the board between liquor and other separating distances. It would apply even then at that point to daycare homes. Great clarity.
So any premises with a permit for any activity, more or less?
All right, so at this point, this leaves us. Yeah, we got to vote on it, either up or down, right? We've been talking about this now for online.
A while.
I, I'd like to get this off the, I'd like to get this off, one way or another.
Yeah, and just, just to reiterate, I think we've gotten to this point, because what we heard from the townspeople.
Some were against, some were for. We, we had a mixed bag.
Right, so we thought we'd try one and then restrict it so that we wouldn't be surprised with something coming up along the interstate and other places in town. So, and what Mike did with this distance as laid out here, it would allow the Phelps Plaza to, organization to be conforming so they can conduct business as they wish and give us an opportunity to see how things go.
And I agree with that, by the way, that we have been conforming.
Yes, absolutely.
And we don't want to hobble them, you know, right out of games of a brand of business.
And I think this is what we've boiled down to here. I think this is a good starting point for us to get into the retail marijuana in town.
I think to that point, this meets your both sides of the coin, the people who want it and the people who don't. This allows you to do both without saying absolutely no or out of any more. Yeah.
Well, we're going to have a business in our main plaza in town. You know, we're, that, that place could handle quite a bit of volume, you know, with the parking and everything there and so forth, so. There goes.
Yeah.
And to Andy's point, is that something that, you know, this, a year from now, we can put it on the first agenda in January to revisit?
Sure.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Should that be part of the motion?
Doesn't need to be. We, we can just put it on there, revisit in a year, and if something happens subsequent to the current operator, if he doesn't changes his mind, right, you can say, now that we don't have one, what do we want to do?
Well, that's the, exactly, you know, that's.
Yep.
All right, so how would we go about making a motion on this?
So if you like, basically, the red line, which, which is the most recent revision, which is what you all have, then you have, basically make a motion to approve the the application P Z twenty-two dash fourteen as revised, and then within, I would say you'd want to set an effective date of, you know, effect, you know, effect, basically effective upon publication, because we'd have to get a notice in the paper.
There's something along the lines of, I move that P Z twenty-two fourteen, the text amendment application pertaining to the prohibited, pro-impake, the prohibition of cannabis establishment, section thirteen, applicant Willington Planning and Zoning to be accepted as amended.
As revised.
As revised, sorry.
Effective upon.
Effective upon publication of notice. Okay.
So is that a motion?
Sure.
Okay, any discussion?
Well, second.
Set motions, they made a second, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
John Tian, opposed.
John Tian's opposed and Doug Roberts is opposed. Okay, motion, motion carries. And please make sure that this is on the agenda again for January. It's very, it's request. All right. Item two hundred unfinished business is the Affordable Housing Plan.
So this, I handed up previously, just to start getting some comments. We've had, I know, between the holiday and then people being missing and absent. We don't, I don't, not necessarily any action items for this meeting, so much as wanting to, if there's comments or, or questions that I need to hear so that we can follow up. Or if we want to wait and give everybody another couple of weeks to review it, we can do that too. I just want to leave this on here so that we don't lose track of it. The goal would be to get the rough draft tightened up to the point where we're ready to basically make it public, and then we would post it online and, you know, probably share it out with some groups, some of them, or others, and then ultimately have a public hearing to hear comments from the public. Following that, maybe make additional revisions, et cetera, and then go for adoption. So this is just really trying to make sure the draft gets to a point where we're comfortable in scheduling for a hearing, but we're not, this is not stuff for the final draft at this point. And we don't even need to discuss it now. If you want us to send me questions or comments via email, whatever you guys prefer.
All right, item F, new business adoption, updated official zoning map.
So, depending on how many of you guys spend time on the town website, a couple of months ago, you saw that we flipped to a new G I S vendor, and so we've been trying to sort of dial in on stuff, and one of the things that really had not been kept up on was an up-to-date official zoning map. We had one that was sort of a draft. We had one that showed up in conjunction with P O C, P O C D, but there were some errors. And when the previous map was done by the previous vendor, there were some zone changes that were made in the last couple of years that were not reflected correctly, so Chris has been slaving away over the last couple of months, and basically, we've taken the existing zoning map and then made changes that reflect all the things that have happened here. So this will show the Loews property, then show that small little sliver which you can just barely see next to it. This also shows in the lower left, you'll see the green South Willington Village Zone, which was changed.
Didn't we change it on that little garage, Ted, what was it, Ted Arts?
Yes, so that's reflected here, so now that reflects D C.
Yeah.
We made a change several, like, four years ago now. Way down, I think, eight Town Turnpike, Ted Ruble, we flipped it back to residential.
That was the, the old, that was, it was a gift store years ago, Victoria Station or something, was it called?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, this basically takes the zoning map that was there and then adds anything that was changed over the last two and a half to three years. There's nothing new that's on here that we're not, that's why this is not a public hearing, because we're not making any changes to all of this is reflective of public hearings, which has previously occurred. But we want to adopt a new official zoning map that's reflective of everything that we've done, get it on the website, get it with the town clerk. So certainly, if you see anything that's, you've meant, you know, that you think has been missed, that we went through everything. I think we've captured it.
Good copies of that one.
It's definitely small.
Let's see, we got some same color, one thirty-two.
D C.
Pink.
Yeah, pink. Think that's the liquor store?
Oh, okay.
One seven one.
Yeah, I got you.
Yeah, I believe that's the liquor store. Yeah. So, and then, so like this one, this is some other stuff that we have been working on with the assessor as well, but, so these are old zoning maps which don't have dates or anything on them, which show that that property is D C and both. Our current parcel map shows that it's two parcels, whereas a previous one shows it as one, so we've been trying to work through making sure that that stuff is up to date as well.
All right, so you're real, you're very confident parcels are accurate, the zoning's been corrected on the ones over the last several years.
Yeah.
When was the last iteration of this map we put out?
I don't think it's been, I don't think it has been comprehensively revised since probably twenty eighteen.
Okay, so that's a good amount of time.
So we had the eight-town turnpike, we did the, the D, I forget where it was, to the, I think it was originally the D C R. So you'll see in the bottom left, right along the Mansfield Town Line, or the gentleman was going to do potentially.
The harvest.
Yeah, so that, you'll see there is red. We have South Willington Village, so that shows the green.
Yeah.
And then, you know, the stuff, Mahaliak Loves, and the small parts which you can barely see, that is effectively what has, what has been changed since these subsequent versions were produced. But I don't see anything that shows that even these back were ever really voted on or codified in any way. And when you're trying to figure out what a zone is and what your, what a zone change application is based on, we need to have something that.
It's accurate.
Right.
Okay, so we need to vote on this.
And, and put it this way, if, let's say, for example, this big parcel that's shown in purple as, as D I, if, if there's some type of error and someone comes into the office tomorrow and says, my property now shows as purple and it's supposed to be R eighty, you're not making a zone change by adopting this. That, that doesn't work that way. This is not some way to circumvent that process. If they came in tomorrow and said the zoning map is incorrect, we look at the minutes, and if that was the case, we would change it. It's an error. So you're not actually changing anything by officially sort of codifying this. That helps.
Is the like any of the Fenton Ruby Parkers, as that stuff that's on, in the River Road Park, are those supposed to be another color or zone, or am I just so spun around on this map that I don't see?
No, I think they're still, I mean, I can check.
I wouldn't, I would. I wouldn't, I would.
I basically took it was already there on the map that was in G I S before and started with that and. Kind of went through the changes, we had any since then.
I just didn't know those two types of properties would bond or something else.
Yeah, I don't think they.
Both of these show them as R eighty.
Yeah. Yes, it designated an open space. Yeah, they would, you turn on the open space later in the G I S, they come up as open space, but.
Within an R.
They are. Cause the government, nonprofit, philanthropic, educational uses are all allowed in R eighty, just kind of catch all.
Um like looking at this, I could undertake your word for, I could undertake to do my own research in order to fact check this, that's an eye chart.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we. We're comfortable because we're really not changing.
Okay.
Other than those three or four, everything else is historically, I mean, this is going back a while historically and.
So I know the ones you'd spoken about in recent times, like gloves, that you know, that roll property, that. And so forth, you know, obviously we have the village capture here now, stuff with the village.
I haven't done it yet, they should put it in the G I S systems, you can go on and interact with it.
Alright, any questions? Anybody online, any other commissioners online have anything?
Nope. Looks good to me.
Okay. Alright, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to uh to approve the adoption of updated official zoning map.
That's.
All in favor?
Alright.
Alright, so we talked initially in the meeting, we have everybody here about officers. Did we want to do an election of officers tonight or? There's nothing according to. To Mike, there's nothing in our bylaws saying we have to, but you know, we've been doing this for a few years, just wondering what people would like to do.
I thought we typically did that after election day, uh we did it in November twenty one.
Okay, I I don't have one, a problem one way or another. Anybody feel strongly about this?
So the next term, I just wanted, so if we, if we do it that way. The next, when would, when would the next election be, election of officers for the commission would be when?
After no, after the number of November election this year.
Okay, so I think as long as we're on the same page.
Election this year.
Uh John is.
Okay.
I am.
Okay. I'm not for another five years, so.
Two years.
Okay, alright, so that's fair.
So we want to do November, yeah, okay, okay. So we'll follow the election cycle instead of the calendar year.
Alright. Yeah, we'll see if somebody else wants to be chairman and then.
We'll start with it for another eleven months, so.
Alright. Alright, so that's November's problem. Item G, approval of minutes of December twentieth, twenty twenty two. I look for them, they look.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of December twenty. Two thousand twenty two. I'll say.
All in favor?
Bye.
Hi.
Hi. I abstain.
Okay.
Present.
Um I abstained.
Okay, who else abstains? Oh, okay.
You got me abstaining, right?
Yes, we do, John. Alright, I M H, public participation for items not on the agenda. Do we have anyone from the public with anything? Tonight? Anyone online with anything? Okay. Item I, correspondence.
No correspondence.
Okay, wow.
I I guess just to follow up on previous correspondence, I did uh. Reach out to uh. Tammy Nuccio and Jeffrey Gordon and follow up to our previous discussion about wanting to have. At the, you know, sort of a meeting with the commissioner, letting them know that you were interested in what your meeting schedule was, so I'm reading back whether you do that.
Alright, thank you. Right, staff report discussion, item one, commissioner training, that's now a law, so.
Anywhere one, so we talked about this a while ago, I have, all should maybe have a copy of this and I can give you one if you don't. This gives you an overview of the act, in short, it's not really of, there's not a lot. Um this is not gonna be, come something that is gonna be this huge issue, issue that's gonna require all kinds of time. Um if we really had a, an an issue, people didn't have. Hours or something, you know, we could, these trainings in house, the state through O P M is gonna put together a calendar. That'll be basically statewide, and they're gonna try to track all the eligible type of things, they're gonna put recordings online and. So it could be as simple as, you know, we need to put together something that's a minimum of an hour. On process and procedure, and perhaps if there's a training, we can either. Folks can watch it in home, or we can, we can do it here, or we can have Alan Sage do it, there's gonna be a lot of flexibility, this is not. Something that is meant to become overly burdensome, um but.
But yeah, it'd be nice, we'd go to the group.
Right, and so in that vein, one of the things that we did just get um is every other year. The Connecticut Bar has um. Training at Wesleyan, um usually lasts for an entire day on a Saturday and it covers everything. Um so they will be having that in March, it'll be on a Saturday again. Um and it will be virtual, so um is that coming? Yeah, I, they haven't, they just released that date, I, this, it basically is gonna cover almost all of this stuff. Um so yeah, I mean, if that, if that counts, that would, that would cover everything, so.
When does this need to be completed by?
It's, it's um. Go, this is based upon appointment. So those in office on one one twenty three must complete four hours by one one twenty four and every year thereafter, and then subsequent to that, it's. Based upon appointment, because if you get appointed in December, you can't get it all done in thirty days, so um. We will, we will keep track of of the Wesleyan stuff and some other things and. Figure out a way that, yeah, hopefully kill as many birds with a single stone as possible, so you're not trying to go to different, different trainings.
Alright, so you're gonna try to coordinate that, so we have options and.
Yeah.
Be nice, it's like we can come up with something here, you know, without you say, if something, it just like get this out of the way.
Yeah. The the training in March, is that gonna be strictly um virtual or are they gonna do in person? They can't really accommodate anybody, they, I mean, six years ago, they were selling out the the Wesleyan space. And they were putting together like these ad hoc rooms that people would watch from, but they just can't accommodate the number of people that are interested now. I think that they, they did it in, what is it, twenty twenty one, virtual because of COVID and they had over a thousand people attend. So because of that, they're just gonna have to go. Um so you get, I mean, you get, I don't know if you've ever gone there, if anybody's attended, a really big.
Yeah.
Land use book, which is su, I mean, super helpful, um. It gives about usually forty dollars person, so. I mean, if you all want to come in on a Saturday and sit around here for six hours and watch together, but we have some budget if you want to watch from home. Um and so once we get the. Um the outline of the topics that they're gonna cover and as we get closer, figure out if this will actually apply to the training hour, if anybody's interested, we can. Get you registered. It's pretty good, I I did the in person twice and the virtual, the first time they had it. Yeah, it, that was one of the things that we really pushed for, and that legislation was proposed. Is, you know, the number of commissioners in in any given town that may have to go through a process and tracking all of that. Um having that training qualify would basically put them in a position where based upon the topics and the time, someone could be covered. Um. So hopefully it'll qualify.
Alright, so there's something we should be hearing about more of than that.
Yeah. Posted once a year.
Applyable this, this year. Alright. Which brings us to, okay, if you're in, it's uh eight sixteen P M, meeting adjourned.